Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM on October the 2nd. Bella Beach City Council meeting will now come to floor. This month, Councilmember Livingston will present the invocation.
Hi, Livingston. Heavenly Father, we've come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion and guide us in our discussions. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of the Bella Beach community. I ask only Jesus that you protect all of those that reside in Bella Beach. I ask that you protect the police, our first responders, and come alongside those that are struggling today, the financial hardships, mental health issues, family concerns, et cetera. I ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Now, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Ms. Jen Creek, would you please call the vote?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Belinda Livingston.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Otero.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Patty. All right, let's move right on into agenda item number one, which is First Order Business Kids to Approve the Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Bankard, who I have a second.
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Now we move to citizen comments. Any citizen would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda? Please raise your hand and wait to be called on. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. If any council member would like to respond to citizens' comments, please hold your responses until we reach the council comments at the end of the meeting. Are there any citizens who would like to address the council tonight? Yes.
Hello, Wendy Gaddis, 309 22nd Street. I'd like to give a quick update on the Bella Beach Community Foundation. First off, on the second shipment of the engraved bricks that are going out front, we had a delay with the vendor. Some of the bricks were out of stock, but the good news is they're back in stock and they should be shipping this weekend, hopefully getting installed very soon. Next, on the 16th Street Hyatt Launch Project, the good news is that the county has finally issued the permit, so hopefully construction on that will also begin soon. The Sea Oats Project is on hold right now while the county looks at our Dune Restoration and what they're going to do there, so we're waiting for further updates on that. And lastly, Bridge Cleanup is going to be October 21st from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. We're hoping to get a big turnout this time. The hurricane put a lot of debris and trash underneath the bridge, so if anybody can come help, we would really appreciate it. Gloves and trash bags will be provided, as well as some refreshments. And that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jen. Would any other citizens like to comment? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Up next is Item Three. We have a presentation from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, beginning with the Law Enforcement Report. We have no report. In that case, we'll move right on to the Code Enforcement for the Month to Report. Hello, Deputy Clacke, how are you?
Good evening, mayor, everyone. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I want to apologize. I thought somebody was supposed to be here tonight. If not, I would have grabbed the notes, so I will look into giving that report to you as soon as possible, and I apologize for that. For the code enforcement for the month of September, I was mainly busy with all the issues with the overgrowth weeds and grasses in the community, which we cleared up a lot of those. If you notice on my report, that a lot of those cases were opened or automatically closed pretty soon thereafter because, again, we're getting a lot of compliance. The other is the unpermitted remodels and other type of construction nuisances. Again, a lot of these are people, again, pulling, doing work without pulling permits, and I'm happy to say that most of them are in compliance now. The other issue I wanted to address is under the categories of the boats, RVs, and clutter. In talking with the city manager, what I've been doing now has been issuing ordinance violations to these individuals. So last month, I did issue four different violations, and again, people are now in compliance. And that's my report, and I'll stand for any questions.
Council?
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, on the failure to have the right permits, are those typically, from a representative standpoint, just a guess, are those homeowners that didn't pull the permits or contractors?
A majority of them are contractors.
Okay. Do they normally, is it because they didn't know they needed to get one, or the other option, which is they just thought it gets slipped by?
They, I will be honest with you, in my opinion is, they know they have to have them. They just see if they can do the work without getting the permit pulled.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions or comments for the day? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Again, I apologize for not being here.
We do have to report, but it's also nice to have extra security.
Yes, sir. Again, all the camp monitors. Thank you.
All right, Item Four, a presentation from the Pinellas Suncoast Fire and Rescue District by Chief Davidson. Hello, Chief.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. The monthly report for Bella Beach for September. We had our second annual September 11th Memorial Walk, which was a great success. We had about 80 participants walking the 3.43 miles. It was a great turnout considering it was a Monday, so we're running for that. In September, to Bella Beach, we had 26 emergency calls, six fire-related and 20 emergency medical-related. And also, in the same month, we had 683 fire training hours and 110 EMS training hours. Overall, for the fiscal year 2023, in Bella Beach, there were 188 calls for service, 48 fire, and 140 EMS. Our annual call volume for the fiscal year, there were 4,042 emergency calls, with 3308 being EMS, emergency medical services, and 734 being fire-related. For the year, there were 8,479 fire training hours and 1,032 medical training hours. Our Fire Prevention Division, it does our life safety inspections, conducted for the fiscal year, 462 annual inspections with 501 annual re-inspections, citing 1,522 violations. In the month of October, we'll be issuing a request for a proposal for the building of our Fire Station 28 in our Emergency Operations Center on the mainland. We're hoping to be under contract, hopefully in December, about a one-and-a-half-year project, and that's where we'll run our emergency operations. And we're still in the works to build an additional fire station here on the northern end of Knox Beach, just south of the Bella Beach border, to better service Bella Beach. And we're currently working with the county to phase in Trainswold Rescue. We're looking at peak unit staffing beginning in March, and we're still in talks about that, and then transitioning them to a full-time unit when that fire station is completed. We are very happy to say that we were awarded a FEMA Safer Grant, a Staffing for Adequate Fire Emergency Response. Just got the award two weeks ago. It was for a total of a 30-year period of $1,140,000, and that's fully funded by government, and that's going to help us add three additional, four additional firefighters, which is ultimately going to improve our ISO rating to a Class 1 department, which is our current project. That's going to take about another year before we have an evaluation, but we're confident we're going to be brought up from a Class 2 to a Class 1 fire department. Very few fire departments in the nation have that rating, so we're very happy about that. And we just found out about the Bricks Cleanup, but we will be there.
Thank you, Chief Davidson. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? Yes, Ms. Roberts.
My wife and I were walking the beach a week or so ago, and I think, I hope this is under the category of misinformation, but a couple of citizens stopped me. We were having just a chat, and they said, you know, we heard that this large white house up here on Gulf Boulevard, the traffic light, was going to be the new fire station. So I just wanted to take the opportunity, so hopefully, if there's some people listening out there, you could answer that question.
No, that is not going to be the new fire station. We, what we're looking at is, there's a vacant piece of property we've been negotiating with the Church, Church of the Angels, which is just three blocks south of your border, and that's an ideal location for response to the area, and it's a two-minute drive, so what about a two-minute response time here? But no, that was not a location that's ours. Yes, sir?
Any other questions or comments for Chief Davidson?
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we're on to Item Five, which is Quarterly Board Reports. Let's start out with the Board of Adjustment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Mike Kelly, Chair for Board Adjustment, to report on the last quarter. Although we only had one hearing two weeks ago in the month of September, we had three cases come up, which is nice for a change, instead of just having one. And of the three, we had a total of six variance requests. So you're allowed a maximum of three. One particular person did request three separate items. One homeowner requested two items, and a third was just the one. So a busy September. We've got another variance meeting coming up in October. We also have another variance meeting coming up November, so the residents are keeping the Board of Adjustment busy, and the experience is overwhelming. So we're glad to see it. Give us something to do.
Very nice. Council, any questions or comments?
I have a question. Mike, are you seeing a trend in the variance requests? Are they the same sort of requests that the aviation does?
Yeah, it's, maybe one is still pools. Yeah, I think one of the September variances was a pool higher than 18 inches of the greater root, kind of root, and Kyle and I are, we sure are November meeting is another pool. It's still, you know, in the, in the application process, but he's got a plan when the planner comes in after the fiscal year, is that right?
Yes.
To go ahead and incorporate a look at that ordinance that's causing all these pool variances. The other ones, we had two this past month that were docks, where there was just not enough water and you're not allowed to dredge, so because you can't do private dredging, they've come to the city to get at least enough water, as some folks have done in the past, especially right out here on Harper Drive, south of City Hall, where it shoals in real bad. So two of those were two or three various requests for the main for September. The one coming up in October, Joey, is a little interesting. It's, it's different. The board hasn't heard it forever. It's regarding the minimum size lots to actually build on in Bella Beach, and that particular, but that particular applicant has three variances coming up to us in October, so it'll be an interesting meeting.
Yeah, I think the, clearly the pools, when I did the overview, that was somewhere where I done my thing and couldn't get the rest of the team to agree with me on that. That's a, a struggle. I had no idea we didn't allow private dredging. That's, it was too exact as city ordinance?
What was explained to us was that the county only allows maintenance dredges at this point, so if you've never had a dredge done on that particular property, then they're not going to give you that permit for it.
The resident, who's just a house south of the park here, hired a outside consultant. He picked his brain for, what, 12 minutes, because he's so familiar with the west coast of Florida, and explained it pretty objectively, that if you've got any kind of seagrass or vegetation in the water, you will not even be considered for a maintenance dredge. Maintenance dredge has got to be clean.
Yeah. I would think alcohol.
I'm sorry?
I would think with dredging, there would be more of the alcohol debris, you know, sand and things like that, than probably the store alcohol.
Yep. Yep. Now, I mean, this, this guy does a lot of consulting up and down the coast, and actually presented a lot of information that was good for all of us, and we explained to him about the maintenance dreads that we had out here 20 years ago to get rid of the sandbar that the county did for us because it was clean. It was our first initial maintenance dredge. We had been turned down by the Army Corps of Engineers, but we got it approved, and the county did it at no expense to Bella Beach.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Kelly?
It sounds like if we get this pool issue resolved, you're not going to have much to do.
I know. We go back to waiting around for another? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. All right, next up, the Citizens Advisory Council. Citizens Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is Rod Skidick with the Citizens Advisory Council. The only meeting we had this past quarter was as our second time, which is the Audit Committee, and so we reviewed a draft of the budget with the city manager. We were fine. It was actually, I think, the second draft, and so we were supportive of what was being presented for last year's budget, which you guys have already proposed.
Councilman?
Thank you.
All right, next up is Parks and Recreation Board.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Hope you're doing well. Tammy Lavenda, Park and Record. I just have a couple of quick updates. In the last quarter, we did have two new members to Park and Record, so welcome Susan and Michael. We are very happy to have them. We are looking for some new fall items to sell with Bella Beach logo. I've mentioned this a couple of times. If you've had any suggestions on things that you'd like to have that we haven't had in the past, please call City Hall or my cell phone number. Just a reminder that we did add a third indoor yoga class, so if you're looking for that for the fall, please check the schedule on the Bella Beach City calendar. The Park and Record for the last quarter has been diligently working on the three fall events that we have. The Third Annual Halloween Event is Saturday, October 28th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00. Pets and pals, so please bring your kids, your grandkids, your puppers, and their costumes. Monday, December 4th, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, is the Holiday Social and Christmas Tree Lighting, and then on Saturday, January 13th, is the Health and Welfare. So we've been working on all of those events already, planning. I mentioned this before, but we did start welcome bags for new residents, so there's a couple of goodies in there, but more importantly, it's all the information that the new residents need, just as they are moving into our community. But we do add information on local businesses, so we would like to get some things from some business owners in Bella Beach, if you have any information, or, I don't want to say coupons, but whatever you want to put in there to let residents know about your business, we would like to help promote that for you if you're interested. And then this isn't about the past quarter, but this Saturday's Beach Cleanup, I know there's a race, and there's been signs, and there's been some postings, but I just wanted to mention that on Saturday, which is always the beach cleanup, the race is just in Clearwater. The race that will sort of affect Gulf Boulevard and the bridge, they won't be closed, but that's on Sunday, so it shouldn't affect each cleanup at all. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Lavenda. Do we have any questions or comments? I will say, hang tight, we're going to be giving some news about the beaches, and we may want to postpone the.
Oh, it's beach.
Beach.
The Saturday.
I will let you.
Okay, awesome. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir. About the, about the beach cleanup, it's going to be probably high tide around 7:00 in the morning, too. Probably very, very little beach cleanup. You're probably right. I don't have the exact dates yet, but we will discuss this whenever we get to the city manager's report. All right, Item Six, the City Attorney's Report. Mr. Mora, you have a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll be talking tonight about various proposed charter amendments and some battle language. It's been a considerable amount of time since our last meeting on that. Multiplicity of issues going on between beach redirgation and other agenda items that we have as we enter the year, as we now enter the new fiscal year. I do have to ask, as just a general statement, as we work with and through other agencies, that commissioners be mindful of the, of their roles individually and not collectively. You are individual members, you don't speak for the board, and so as you reach out to other agencies, other divisions of government, whether at the state level or otherwise, be mindful of your role and the representations you make in that regard. Otherwise, I have nothing, Mr. Mora.
Council? Mr. Mora, anything on that ham radio tower on H Street, 12th and 86th?
You did talk to me. I followed up with his counsel. I've not received a substantive response yet. I don't have any information to report beyond the fact that we, the city, have submitted this to permitting for the, for the county's review. Kyle and I spoke about this as recently as last Thursday, in talking about additional correspondence with the county, but I don't have any information or updates on that personally. Thank you.
Can I just add, on our report, outstanding code violations, there is a little summary there, is.
Yeah, but this has been going on for, and I'm not blaming anybody. I mean, this is first race to me in July of 2022, and depending on your perspective on the matter, it has not yet reached a resolution.
Yeah, and Mr. Mora, you're very sympathetic, but he's more or less got handcuffed. I'm saying that as a terms.
I just want to note that it states that the applicant has gone to Pinellas County for a fully dependent assessment of the situation, so it's, there's, there's a lot of people involved, too, so just to, you know, to residents.
For sure. I think Member Bankard's concern is that, inasmuch as he's, he's echoing sentiments or concerns raised in my constituents, as it was submitted to permitting more than a month and a half ago, if not longer, and ordinarily, certain things should, don't typically take that long. However, this is a unique, unique item, both the local and county level, and I think as a result of that, people are happy to review things they may not ordinarily find themselves reviewing, especially in this landscape. So it's definitely proceeding on a more unique path for all the various legal reasons we've talked about. But the question's well taken, and I just don't have more information.
Appreciate it. And just for the record, this person is following the direction he was given by the magistrate, is that correct?
At this stage, yes. By the magistrate, and more importantly, by city administration at this stage.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Mora? Thank you, Mr. Mora. Appreciate it. Up next, City Manager's Report. Mr. Riefler.
Thank you, Mayor. So first off, we have the Gulf Boulevard Undergrounding Project. The Utility Consultants of Florida are pretty much complete in its entirety of Phase 1, and they're starting on Phase 2. Duke, their binding cost estimate for Phase 2, I requested it because originally we agreed that we wouldn't pay the Phase 2 until this budget year, so I requested it. I'm still waiting on them to turn that into me, so I can get that project rolling, get the materials ordered for that. But it's not slowing down Utility Consultants of Florida, because they're already moving along in Phase 2, and they're, based on what they've experienced with Phase 1, they're trying to put as much as possible in the right way and not requesting any property easements from residents, and that's just been the way of it. Seems to be working out best is plenty from the right way, and Duke's been agreeable, so we've had it on site and made it work to the best for the residents in this project. The Starwater Improvement Project, we've been cleaning and videoing the pipes, as we talked about. We're about 90% complete as of today, a little bit more tomorrow, and then all that will go to gemini engineering, where they will complete the final design, make their recommendations based on our last discussion to council, and provide the bid documents to move forward the project.
Any surprises up to this point?
No surprises. We did get video, I haven't seen it yet, but it was called, the 4th Street, that check valve that is not functioning properly. Where the sleeve comes out of the C-ball, the check valve's working, but there's a, the first joint of that, of that sleeve is compromised, and it's leaking directly into it, into the pipe. So I'm going to give that to the engineer to figure out a fix as part of the project. So that's what, that's one check valve that was working, and since then, the pipe has erupted into the pot over. It doesn't no longer work correctly. The FMIT insurance, you saw that, I got the, the answer to the doctoral question on some of the property insurance. She provided us the different options, and I sent them to the council by email to look over, and I don't know how many of you feel, if you'd like to raise our multiples for all of the perils and name storm deductible. It does lower the insurance, but obviously, you know, if we hadn't, we'd be paying more on pocket to a certain point.
It didn't seem to me that it was, it was worth making that, that type of modification. Certainly, we would have some savings, but all it takes is a little event.
Right. And we're currently budgeted for the original plan, which was the 5% name storm $1,000 deductible, so the best coverage would be that. That's where they got us. The, okay, this brings us to the project that you mentioned earlier. I wrote it down here as the Emergency Beach Rotation Control Project, but now it's been titled, after seeing the plans, the Post Adalia Emergency Shore Stabilization Project, Stabilization Project, excuse me. And that is, you know, we had a meeting today with the county contractor, which is going to be Gator dredging and the county. It's in the planning process and, or gaining the easements necessary to do the project. Currently have the three easements. I should have the other two easements for the condominiums by tomorrow. Is speaking with Gator, Gator dredging representatives. They, at this point, don't sound like they're going to start until Monday. I gave them the permit paperwork to fill out. They also need to complete forms to certify that they're going to, any changes they make to Morgan Park, they're going to restore it in the same condition or better. When I say changes to Morgan Park, the, it's going to be a large operation. We are gathering the MOT plans, putting together information to send out to residents, but it is going to be, they set up to 250 dump trucks full of sand daily, so that's going to start early in the morning, and that's when we're going to see the biggest lineup. The way the MOT designed is they are going to use the center lane, going south from Morgan Park all the way down to 19th to have a queue of trucks, and they need to modify the opening of the drive to Morgan Park for the trucks to turn in. They need to relocate temporarily the pavilion structure, and that is basically to allow the national amount of sand trucks to get in and get out on a daily basis so that the project can be completed in a fast amount of time. Based on their experience of what they've done in Treasure Island and St. Pete, the south portions of the beach, they feel that maximizing the amount of sand they can get in there, keeping the project timeline as short as possible is the best, best way to go about it. Right now, they're asking that the project spans 45 days, so that would be the closure of Morgan Park for a span of 45 days. They're also going to need to. They're also going to need to use the Marina parking lot for staff parking, which are going to shuttle down to Morgan Park. So the beach, the access is heavily closed because our overwalks are not usable with the drop offs. The good news is, they did say that they, since they're going to do the entire beach and restore the dune systems, they're going to be putting a lot of sand out there. And they will work with us to build the sand backup where our overwalks are so that they are usable. So hopefully, where the tide's coming in, what they can do will get us to a point where we need very little modification to those overwalks. Because in talking with the state, it started getting complicated when they were telling me that the, what they permitted for the overwalks, the beach has changed. So no longer are they a permissible structure to be out as far as they are because the dunes have washed back so far. And they typically only want to allow you to extend about 10 feet off the dune system. So when you lose all the dune, you're kind of way out there, especially at 21st Street. If you've seen that, it's about 25 feet off the dune now. So this will help. So we're going to have to see where it all ends up. But hopefully, in the restoration of the beach and all the sand that the county is supplying us, it's going to, it's going to make our overwalks usable again. Let's see. So again, there's, the pileup of the trucks or the long queue of the trucks is going to be in the morning time as they're going to give up. They're going to start very early and then the trucks are going to line up until they just start letting them come in when the sun comes up and dumping the sand. So you will expect that there's going to be a closure of that middle lane on Gulf Boulevard early every morning, six days a week, Monday through Saturday. And they'll have, they're requesting the sheriff be out there to help control the traffic. And then, from there, as these trucks dump, so you're going to go back to the pit, which will be somewhere in the center of the state, and, you know, refill and do another whole cycle of trucks. So that is not going to be as much of a pilot because it's going to be more spread out as they dump. So it shouldn't be as much of an interruption in the early afternoon. But that's right now the information we've been given. And again, we'll try to put that all together, the maintenance of traffic and just a general overview to send out to the residents so that they're all aware of what is going on.
Yes, question?
So you said it was going to come from the north to the south to 19th Street. So pretty much anybody that's north of 19th Street, they'll still have the ability to come south on another street to get down to 19th to come across, right?
Well, what they're going to do is they're going to have the center lane blocked off. They're going to be controlling traffic moving southbound as the trucks turn in and come out. So we'll back up traffic moving south, but if you want to go around it by Bayshore, that probably is going to be possible. But again, they'll be allowing traffic to flow south. It'll just be directed to allow the trucks to turn in, turn out, and let traffic to turn in, turn out.
Okay. Yeah, I would recommend that if they could somehow make sure that they're not blocking 19th Street, that at least we give people north of 19th Street to use Bayshore to get back there and come out if they want to avoid the option of trying to get in between the trucks.
I'll bring the analysis of everything about that.
What I recall him saying was that they didn't anticipate it being that much. But depending upon the efficiency of the trucks coming in, dropping off their load, and getting the heck out of there, it was very much possible that the middle lane could be blocked all the way down to the crosswalk. So it's an inconvenience. People are not going to be happy about it. It's going to be very noisy in the mornings. As soon as the trucks are all gone, they're headed to Orlando and they're making a U-turn and coming right now with more sand and they're doing it again. So it's twice a day. And it's, it's going to be a big hassle for a little while. But we have basically been begging for sand for several years now. And right now, we have no coverage whatsoever. A storm were to hit us, it would be devastating. So this is imperative, but it must happen. And as a community, I ask everyone, please be patient during this operation and be mindful that we may be inconvenienced with not being able to access the beach. We know that Morgan Park is going to be closed, they're going to have to move the pavilion temporarily. There's going to be about 20 vehicles that are parked in the Marina area. That it's going to be, again, a convenience. We've asked them to park on the south end of the Marina so that at least if you're trying to access your boat, you can get in on the north side. But this is something that must happen, and this is what we've all been waiting for. So the good news is, is the county is picking up the entire tab and they're actually coming to our rescue. So I'm hoping that we'll get some more information out and maybe something on the website and an email last or two, just to remind everybody about what's going on. And truly, I'm grateful we are to be in this position because City Manager Reefer was able to scramble and get the few temporary easements that we needed. And the fact that I've been probably the most vocal person in the county, they put us right at the top of the list. So they said by the end of October, this project may be completely over and other communities may not get sand. So I consider it all a win and a blessing for Beller Beach. All right, would you like to continue?
Mr. Mayor, so you mentioned to the crosswalk, were you talking about the 19th Street crosswalk?
Yes.
Okay. So this is great, so this has to do with the rebuilding of the dunes. But this isn't rebuilding the beach, like with the system that we were talking about, restoring the beaches?
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that they explained it was that they're going to be building up our dunes to where they're about 10 feet high. And anything extra that they bring in becomes firm.
Yes.
And starts heading for the beach. So we are getting sand. And then, as soon as the dune construction is complete, the county is also hiring a professional company to come in and do the COs through our entire beach. So is it going to stop her? No, it's certainly going to help us if we do get one. Come on up, Mr. Kelly.
Just one last, when's it start?
We don't have an exact date yet.
They're talking Monday.
Okay.
Because we have the race this weekend, and they wanted to start after the race.
They were, they were actually wanting to close Morgan Park tomorrow, if that tells you anything. But the race is this weekend, right?
Yes.
And so they're purposely not working on Saturday for that very reason?
Great. Will the other, like, any in Rocks Beach be getting this, too? Or?
Any in Rocks Beach? At this point, is not because they've not been able to secure their permits or their easements.
Anything going to be done, since it's not really going to be going into the beach with some of the over, I'm sure there's going to be a bunch of D7s, the Q9s pushing the sand. Problem is, stops away in T Street, we've got that big crater holding on down itself. How much tech is going to take out, you know, professionally?
Well, because this isn't your standard dredging, where they're helping from out of the water, wet sand. They're actually bringing in dry sand, and they're starting at the seawall. Whereas before, they sort of started building it inward. This is a different operation, and they seem to have enough confidence to spend over $20 million.
It would have been nice because as the storm pulls the sand out, okay? We had a real high tide, we had a real low tide. We would have brought some equipment in there with guys that know how to run waves. At the real low tide, we could have pushed about 40 to 60% of that sand back up, leaving a crater. But since we didn't have any storms, I would have filled it back in in two to three days and then pushed it back up. We probably would have saved about 77% of sand.
Well, it's amazing to me that they're bringing it all in from Orlando.
Good job, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Reefer, would you like to continue?
Sure. Yes. So yeah, next on the list was the dune lockover modifications. Like I said, I've been talking to the state about permitting, but we talked about this project is going to change the layout of the beach, so we have to kind of see where it all ends up. And hopefully, we can bring our lockovers usable and open very shortly after that project is completed. I'm sure you all have heard at this point, our city clerk, Patricia Gettrick, has announced her retirement date, and we need to start searching for the next clerk.
So I do have a question about that. Is this her last regular council meeting, or are you doing one more?
One more.
One more, okay.
We're going to call a series of special meetings.
I'll call a series of special meetings, don't worry.
So I sent you all the job description. It's been updated, it's been reviewed by the city attorneys. I'm looking for any additions that council would like to make before we post it. I'd like to get it posted hopefully tomorrow, so we start getting applicants. The RFP contract negotiations continues. Police Pro told me they would have to me and their review inside of the contract earlier this week. I will then pass it along to our attorneys. And it's right now scheduled to be approved at October 6th of Special City Council meeting, which will be right before an work session on that day, so we have a six-month meeting. The RFP for Audit Services, we're going to start to put that together. That's something we talked about when we were planning the budget. We're just coming up on the end of our current contract, we need to go back out and find a new auditor for future budget years. And then Code Review Services, this is something we put money in the budget for, to have a professional planner. We experience a code review, help our planning and zoning board review the code, make suggestions to clean it up and update it to prevent having to have so many variances and then leave the code flowing and be more, be up to date with the construction, planning, zoning pieces of the code. One important thing, though, is that we do need to remember that the Senate Bill 250, that has to do with Hurricane Ian, and we follow it in that zone of, where we cannot increase the level of restrictions, or can't make more restrictive code until, to be in effect before October 1, 2024 at this point. So when we talk about the pool code with the 18 inches, that would be something that would be less restrictive. So that's something that we could take care of this budget year before that. Some of the other stuff, if we are going to increase our restrictions, we can have it all planned out. We can start drafting ordinances and then, you know, when we come around to the expiration of that bill, then we can make our code adjustments then. So that's the plan. At this point, the city attorney and I are working on getting a pinkyback agreement from another county that has done a similar code review.
So. Great. Any questions or comments for the city manager?
Just want to put one on the city clerk job description. Did you want any feedback on that now, or just give to you later? I mean, it's not a big, it wasn't a biggie, just a very small item. Then when I was reading that, out of qualifications, and not to be nitpicky, but I know sometimes we always try to come up with unique adjectives when we're working with documents like this. So if I looked down in the qualifications, where it talks about the knowledge of the laws, ordinances, and regulations, it just kind of startled me when I read complete knowledge, which that would be a toughie, I think, for anybody. So just something less than complete, like just, just knowledge of the laws and ordinances or above it, we use comprehensive. Complete just kind of startled me a little bit. I mean, maybe only Randy would be the only person that would have the complete knowledge of the law.
Sounds a lot like practical nitty-gritty.
It might be, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Reefer. Our next one, item eight, which is the city clerk's report. Ms. Chentry, you have the board.
My report is just a short recap of the meetings we've had and the city email list, which you were just saying, you know, we're doing beach restoration and we'd like to grow our list, but it's not growing very fast. So we'd like to figure out a way to get the word out, to get more people on our list so we can let them know what's going on, so just want to bring that up.
We have a big digital sign up front, for starters. And then we also have a nice website.
Yeah.
That coupled with our Constant Contact or whatever service we use, I'm sure the word will travel fast.
Yes, we do. You can sign up right on the homepage of our website, so thanks for bringing that up.
Also, the fact that there's, you know, 45 full-size dump trucks blocking Gulf Boulevard, that's probably going to be a period really key, and if something's happening. All right, any questions or comments for Ms. Chentry? Well, I have one. Whenever I received a phone call that you had decided to retire, I wasn't sad. Not saying that I wanted you to leave, but I never want to hold anybody back from doing what they like to do. And you have served this community well.
Thank you.
It's been an honor to work with you. And we're not done yet, we have a couple more meetings, but I wish you the very best of luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
All right, we are on to the consent agenda, which is item number nine. This is for approval of the September 18, 2023 Final Public Budget Hearing Committee. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion made by Lieutenant Terra, do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Vice Mayor Shirley. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, one person opposes, but the consent agenda passes. All right, now we are up to the public hearings, beginning with item number 10. This is for consideration of ordinance 23-06. This will be a first reading. Mr. Moore, you have the board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last, about two weeks ago, we had a work session on a series of proposed charter amendments. Took the feedback of the members present and distilled that into revised ordinances. We have, the way that we're doing is ordinance calls for the election, the resolution has the battle. You don't adopt the resolution, it's elected ordinance. Ordinance is take two readings, resolution is take one. So you don't have the resolutions in your packets, and that's on purpose. Do, however, before each of the ordinances, in your package materials, there's a summary of what the changes would look like if all were adopted and accepted by the electorate. Again, what you're voting on is whether or not to submit these questions to the electorate. If the electorate approved all of them, then that, the language that you see in yellow, highlighting with red text and underlined is how it would change. And then there's also, though the resolutions are not on the agenda tonight, I, to help with some of the confusion over the work session, I just made two pages. This is what the ballot language would look like if approved. With your indulgence, Mayor, I would say that we should go through these one at a time. Of course, they are ordinances, they each have to be read by title. So we'll start with the fourth, the first one. This is ordinance 23-06. The ordinance of the city council of the city of Beller Beach, Florida, submitting to the city electors a referendum question on the amendment of section 2.02 of the charter to increase the number of permissible consecutive terms for city council members, including the mayor, from two terms to three terms. Identifying the issue here on set ballot, providing for renumbering, providing for the adoption of ballot language by resolution, providing for publication in accord to the law, and providing for an effective date. This has been a first reading, ordinance 23-06 by title only. As the title suggests, Mayor, this is the ordinance that would change the language in the charter, so such that individual council members, including the mayor, shall be prohibited from holding office for more than three, as opposed to two consecutive terms.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Before we go to council debate, let's go to the citizens for comments. Would anyone like to comment on this proposed ordinance? All right, citizen comments are now closed. I'm gonna need a motion to adopt ordinance 23-06. Would someone like to make a motion? Yes?
I'd like to move that we consider approving the ordinance 23-06.
Motion is made by Lloyd Roberts. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second is by council member Livingstone. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor.
We discussed this a lot in a couple of the workshops. I don't think it's necessarily imperative that we do this, but I think for the most part, most of the council felt, based on a lot of feedback that we've heard from Mayor Gaddis, of the benefits of being able to be in this position for three terms as opposed to two terms. In some positions that are available, that our city can be represented, oftentimes because we have a relatively shorter amount of time that we're eligible to be in our positions, some of those other positions with the county and other organizations, we're not thought of as being here long enough to actually be in those seats. So I think that's the main benefit of changing our current ordinances from two terms to three terms. There'll be some other changes you'll see down the road as we consider some of these other ordinance changes, but I think it makes the most sense for our city so that we're best represented within the county and possibly even the state. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Do we have any other questions or comments on this? Yes, Mr. Banker.
Um, Mr. Moore, could you refresh our memory again on how a charter has to be reviewed? I believe your charter has to be reviewed according to your charter in six-year increments, I believe, off the top of my head. It doesn't prevent charter provision from being revisited sooner than that. My understanding is that you last reviewed your charter somewhere between 2018 and 2020, I believe, I don't think we're past that.
And that said, we started discussing a bunch of charter changes earlier this year. And we just went to vote, I think 11, 92% were making the changes back two years ago, or two, well, it's two and a half years ago now. And I have a big problem with any charter changes two years after 11 votes these changes in. And extending these terms, you know, I go back to history to see where, where we went wrong, where we went right. When Washington, the only president ever received all electoral votes, he declined to run a third time. He noted when he left office and made London run a third time, need to establish an office not a kingdom, but as a servant to the people. Jefferson, probably was one of the smartest presidents we ever had, maybe the smartest man to serve in America, he noted specifically that two terms was enough for one person and that might overextend the executive power by having a president serve more than two terms. We're now going to have council serving 12 years. That's a kingdom, in my opinion, and it's not needing, the electorate was, the people clearly said, two terms, three years apiece. Now, I'm sure you can buy a lot of votes with some cheese and wine this coming year and get this thing changed again, but does it benefit the city and why would, why would we want to do this? And I'm not gonna go through each, I'm not gonna make a speech on each one of these charter changes, but I'm 100% against it. Charters, councils are, council members are, charters are there for council to hold council accountable. Ordinances are for the residents to be held accountable. Just because a couple of council members don't like the way it's written or they're gonna lose their seat, should not give council the opportunity to change this. Now, it does have to go to the voters, but I think this is just wrong. That's all I can say.
Any further comments, Mr. Banker? Do we have other comments from the council?
I just want to add that the reason this is being brought up has nothing to do with existing council members. Doesn't affect any of us in the positions we currently hold, it's for the future of Bel Air Beach. There've been some laws that have changed within the state of Florida that has created the need for us to take a look at our, our existing charter and to just be mindful of that, none of this goes in effect unless the voters vote on it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Shirley. The reason why this came up is that recently the Florida Legislature introduced a new law that required council on this level to do full financial disclosures, which is something that none of us want to do because we're a small community, we're not paid anything to do this job. And there's always going to be a possibility that someone might take advantage of that public knowledge. However, there, I truly believe that there's still some good people out there that are willing to actually take that risk and step up for the community and, and serve them with a quality that we all expect. Unfortunately, oftentimes someone may interpret a change to our ordinance as something that we're trying to take advantage of the community and that is just not the case. So you're gonna find that not only, number one, we start with extending the terms, why would we want to extend the terms? Well, the first, we had a candidate that ran for mayor before me that no one knew, and he was elected, and we realized quickly that maybe that wasn't the best recipe for Bel Air Beach. A lesson that we learned from that is most likely we will never elect a first-term candidate as mayor in this community again. If we do, I'll be surprised, it could always happen, but certainly someone that we don't know running as mayor doesn't work well for me and I don't think it works well for most people that I know in this community. So the formula is run once as a council member, run for mayor in your second term. As soon as you become mayor, you have to start branching out into the community and you start interacting with county and state officials and also other municipalities, and it takes a while to build those relationships. Without building relationships, we don't get much. We have to really work hard and, and interact with our neighboring communities and, again, the county and the state to make things happen. It's that third term that I believe is the most beneficial for Bel Air Beach. Not necessarily the candidate, because at the end of the day, what were you getting out of it other than benefiting the community that you live in? And so that was, that was my whole reasoning for putting this ordinance together. And I hope that if we're able to put this on the ballot, that everyone will remember what I said tonight, that this is, this is good medicine for Bel Air Beach. And that's all I have to say. Any other comments from the council? No? All right, well, let's, let's put this to a vote. Patty?
Randy.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, I got a roll here.
You've done everything just fine so far. I just wanted to interject to state that as we're talking about each of these, most especially because of the amount of time that was spent trying to make sure that they exist independent of one another, I want to make sure it's clear, it's tempting to talk about all of them collectively and there is a collective effort here, but at the moment, we are just on ordinance 23-06, which is specific to changing the consecutive terms to two terms to three terms. So as you, as you vote, you're only voting on that ordinance, we'll take each of them in this session.
Thank you for clearing that up. All right, Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Banker?
No.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes, so the first reading passes five to one.
All right, Mayor, as we proceed to the next one, I did want to note one difference you'll notice in your agenda materials as you're flipping between these ordinances, just as we've talked about some changes and before statutes, one change that came with this legislative session is requirement that each ordinance have a business impact estimate in, in the, in the agenda that's published with the agenda, and so we've done that here, it's to take effect with the October 1 date, so that's what you'll see here, a business impact estimate. In each of these instances, no discernible impact, however, it is there to ensure absolute compliance in the event that we don't have any technical issues or challenges as we proceed. So with that, ordinance number 23-07. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida, submitting to the city electors a referendum question on the amendment of sections 2.01, 2.02, and 2.07 of the charter to reduce the number of at-large members on the city council, including the mayor, from seven members to five members, to specify the timeline for transitioning to five members and to adjust the corresponding voting requirements for official action of a five-member council. Identifying the issue appear on said ballot, providing for renumbering, providing for the adoption of ballot language by resolution, providing for publication in accordance with the law, and providing for an effective date. This has been a first reading, ordinance 23-07 by title only. Just so you know, the corresponding ballot language that's intended to accompany this that is not in the ordinance, but will be in the resolution to be adopted next month should this pass, is shall charter amendment number two title, reducing the city council to five members from seven members. The ballot language would be shall the city amend the charter to provide for a city council composed of five at-large council members, including the mayor, as opposed to the existing language providing for a city council composed of seven at-large city council members, including the mayor, and adjust the corresponding voter requirements for the council to take action. What you'll see here in the body of the ordinance is three separate sections had to be amended to make this effective. There are the first two are, one is just an outside reference to there shall be a council of seven members, changing that to five, that's the easy one. The second language that is changed is to add language to the election and terms section of your charter to explain how this would happen. I will tell you that the, the challenge with this and the next two proposed ordinances was making sure that each contemplated the possibility of the other without being dependent on the other. And so, for example, in our last work session, this language contemplated this happening in the March 2025 election. Well, if we move the election, then that language isn't gonna make sense. And that, that's an if, but that possibility exists, that the voters have the ability to approve one and not the other three, or any one and not the others, or combination thereof. So the language is, beginning with the next regular election, for the council member seats whose full terms of office at the time of their election or appointment were originally set to expire in March 2025, the city shall transition to a five-member council. So basically, member, Mayor Gaddis, and I believe Member Roberts, and I believe Member Livingstone are all on that cycle, their seats are all on that cycle, so when those, and I believe one more, maybe Member Notaro. I don't have the chart in front of me, but suffice to say, anybody whose term end is scheduled presently to end in 2025, that's when, whenever those seats come up for election, and that whenever is dependent on the other charter amendments, whenever those come up for election, what we would do is instead of having the mayor's seat and three council member seats up for election, you would have the mayor's seat and one council member seat up for election, such that your voting cycle going forward would be three, two, three, two, in terms of the seats that are up. So that was the easiest way to do that. The challenge, again, being you were serving at-large seats, so you couldn't say, you know, the District 2 seat or the District 6 seat, you had to do it based on when your terms end. So that's why it reads that way. And then the final proposed change in the ordinance is the quorum requirement. Your, your charter presently has explicit language that at least four members of the council are required to take, for any vote, affirmative vote to pass, because it's four of seven, which is a majority of seven. I just changed the language to say a majority of the council. So that way, when we, it wouldn't make sense to have four out of five be the requirement, supermajority requirement going forward for all business. So that's, those are the proposed changes in this ordinance. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And before we move forward with the questions from the council, let's go to the citizens for comments. Would anyone like to comment on proposed ordinance 23-07? All right, citizen comments are closed. Before we continue, I'm gonna need a motion to adopt ordinance 23-07. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Shirley, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Roberts. Vice Mayor Shirley, you have the floor.
I think our city attorney did a pretty good job explaining, and I have nothing more than that.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Just a comment, I would like to commend Mr. Moore on this. We discussed this a lot during the last work session, and trust me, please, when I tell you that understanding and having this thing flow is not easy. And he did a fantastic job of tying everything together on these various ordinances. I went through it initially when we first started talking about this and went home and said, I think I'm just gonna figure out how this is gonna work. And after 17 tries, I finally decided, I'm just gonna let him work that. So he did a fabulous job on this, and I think the three people that actually come up are the three seats in '25, or myself, and Vice Mayor's, and Mr. Zabel's seat.
Yes, that's right. That's right, thank you.
But yeah, so great job.
I second that. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'm going to just go ahead and spell it out for those of you that are not aware of it. We did, I actually did a survey of all of the municipalities in Pinellas, and come to find out, we were one of the smallest municipalities with the most members. We were, we were compared with Argo, we were compared with St. Petersburg. And it really just didn't make sense. Between that and also the fear that we would not have enough candidates in each election, this makes perfect sense. So now that I've spoken, does anyone, does anyone else like to comment on this? All right, Patty, let's take it to a vote, please.
Councilmember Banker?
No.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
No.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So it passes four to two, and that is the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next ordinance on the agenda is ordinance number 23-08. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida, submitting to the city electors a referendum question on the amendment of sections 2.02, 2.04, and 5.05 of the charter to increase the term of office for individual council members, including the mayor, from three years to four years, and to amend the regular election schedule to accommodate such terms. Identifying the issue appear on said ballot, providing for the adoption of ballot language by resolution, providing for publication in accordance with the law, and providing for an effective date. This has been a reading, ordinance number 23-08 by title only. Just as I did with the previous one, I'll read the proposed ballot language that would accompany this. It is, the title is increasing term of office from three years to four years, and the language is shall the city amend the charter to provide that each individual term of office for city council members, including the mayor, shall be for term of office for city council members, including the mayor, shall be for four years as opposed to the existing three-year term, beginning with the officials elected in 2024, and amend the regular election cycle to accommodate the longer election terms. So that's the ballot language. I want to, I do think it's worth looking at the precise language that's been added here. I'm not going to read it chapter and verse, but I will tell you this was the most involved of the proposed amendments for a few reasons. I think that your points were well taken during the work session, that if we moved to a four-year schedule, but stay on four-year terms, but stay on the current election cycle, what would happen is we would have an election in March 2024. Those people would serve for four years. So they would serve until 2028 if this passed and was approved by the voters. And then the next cycle would be 2025 and go for four years. So they would serve until 2029. So if we didn't change anything, we would have an election in 2025, then nothing in '26, nothing in '27, and then again in '28, rapid fire, two new votes, '28, '29, and then again, four of these gaps. And so there was a concern articulated by the council, or at least by some members of the council during the work session, that that should, that we should keep those staggered terms. And so this ordinance accomplishes both changing the language from three years to four-year terms, which is a simple amendment. You see that in 2.04, for example, for the mayor. And what it does is in 2.02, says that commencing with the 2024 election, if this passes at the 2024 election, whoever wins for the seats that are vacant, with the exception of the vacancy being filled for Mr. Zabel's seat, which we can address separately, but, excuse me, the regular term seats that are up for election in 2024, if this passes, would serve until 2028. If it fails, they'll stay right on schedule for their three-year term. So the voters are simultaneously electing who would serve and how long they'll serve for that term at the March election if this passes, this council. And then again, the election cycle is altered so that we would go, as suggested earlier, 2024. Then the positions that are scheduled then in 2025 would move to 2026, whenever we have an election in 2026 again, because I couldn't presume that the ballot measure for November versus March elections would pass. And so you would go to 2026, and then that way, again, it'll go '24, '26, '28, '30. So every two years, you will have an election with this change and avoid those larger gaps in between. And again, it'll be a three, two, three, two cycle discussed a moment ago. So that's how this is contemplated to work. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember? I will say that it makes perfect sense as long as you don't explain it to us.
Listen, I will tell you, as convoluted as that may have seemed, your poor city manager sat in the conference room where I did this all on a dry erase board and figured it out. It is more involved, you know, and that is at your request, based on some of the feedback given last time. There's cleaner, simpler ways. It just says three to four, but then you don't think of the consequences of it. And it's cleaner, but it's not necessarily the result you want in the picture.
All right, let's go to the citizens for comments on this particular ordinance, 23-08. Any citizen comments? No?
You will be tested on your way out to make sure you understand.
Especially you, Mr. Kelly. All right, seeing there are no citizen comments, they are now closed. I'm going to need a motion to adopt ordinance 23-08.
So moved.
Motion made by Lloyd Roberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Shirley. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor.
Thank you. So the other day, I turned on my television. I have Spectrum. And so it defaults to Bay News Nine. And then I'm immediately going to change it to the station I really want to watch. And as Bay News Nine came on, it said, we're now going to talk about the changes the City of Tampa is now going through with their voting. So I said, I'm going to listen to this. They were doing exactly this. And the net of it really is, they wanted to change their elections to be in November, which we're going to talk about later, of the same years that we have the general election for our country and the midterms. They wanted to do that for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's going to save them a lot of money by doing it just those times. I won't bore you with the detail on that. But more importantly was the turnout. They had statistics that said, when you have elections the same time as the general election, they have like a 65% turnout. The elections that were not tied to either the general election or the midterms, they have like a 17% turnout. And I think that makes sense. People come out through those larger elections. So that's really what we're trying to do here, is to try to get our elections tied in in the November election of even years just for that. So in order to do that, this is one of those things that you can change. We're on a four-year term. If we're on a three-year term, obviously, you're only going to be odd numbers. Even if you start the first year on an even number, three years later, you're automatically in an odd, then you go back to even, doesn't work. So that's the main reason we want to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, for totally ignoring Mr. Moore on sticking to the topic. I felt, I felt the same way. These do have to be joined together for it to make sense. Why would we want to, you know, extend the terms? Why would we want every two years specifically so that we can line up with the presidential and midterm elections? Any other comments or questions from the council? All right, Patty, can we take a roll? Call, please.
Councilmember Bankard?
No.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
No.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
And so first reading passes four to two, ordinance 23-08. And Mr. Moore, do you have something to add on that one?
Not about that one, but I prepared that, 23-09. Ordinance 23-09 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, submitting to the city electors a referendum question on the amendment of section 5.05 of the charter to adjust the regular election cycle from March to November, contingent on the passage of a separate ballot measure governing the duration of council member terms, identifying the issue of appear on said ballot, providing for the adoption of ballot language by resolution, providing for publication in accordance with the law, and providing for an effective date. This has been a reading of ordinance number 23-09 by title only. As I've done with the two previous, I've read the ballot language, proposed ballot and cheer that will be before you next meeting. Charter Amendment Number Four, conditionally aligning local election cycle with federal election cycle in November. If a majority of the city's electors approve an amendment extending council member terms to four years, shall the city also amend the charter to provide that its regular local elections for council members shall be held in November, in general alignment with the federal election cycles, as opposed to the existing requirement that regular local elections are in March? Yes, to amend the provision, no, retain. I appreciate your admonition to Mr. Roberts. I would tell you that in drafting these, there was a challenge, an understanding that the way that you folks had talked about this, these were late. One of the explicit directions I was given in our work session was, we don't really care about having our elections in November if we can't get our election cycles changed in a way to these even-numbered four-year terms, such that we can stay on that same November cycle. But when I asked, do you want it to work both ways? The answer was, no, we don't want them to be each contingent, just contingent on that. And so that's how this was, that's how this was written. It is very, I think, clear to the voters that number four is conditional on the passage of number three. If number three fails, number four is going to fail no matter what the vote is. But it still needs to have a passing vote to be approved. And so other than that, the, in terms of the body of 23-09, you can see 5.0, the language in 5.05 says, beginning with the regular election to be held in 2026. So it would be very, very clear that beginning with the regular election to be held in 2026, on the next, on the Tuesday, next, after the first Monday in November, then this would happen. I can write this like that because we're only doing this if we move to four years. So we already know in the four-year ordinance, we're in the four-year ballot language, we are extending the terms of a few seats so that they would extend all the way into November 2026 or into 2026. I know it's a little convoluted. I'm sorry. It's the only way you can make all of that work. But basically, if you, if the voters approve the four-year term and they approve this, then the first time you have an election, in the very next election after the March 2024 election, will be in November 2026. That will be the gap. You'll jump to March 2025, November 2025, March 2026. November 2026 will be your next election, were they to approve everything. And so the people elected in 2024 will serve until 2028, the people elected in 2026 will serve until 2030, and every four years, if it is approved by this council and voters.
Thank you for explaining that, Mr. Moore. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Citizen comments are closed. I need a motion to adopt ordinance 23-09.
So moved.
Motion made by Lloyd Roberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Shirley. Mr. Roberts, once again, you have the floor.
Yeah, I think I cheated last time. Kind of already talked about this somewhat, so pretty self-explanatory. We just want to get on the four-year cycle, and that's why we want to do that.
Any other questions or comments? All right, Patty, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Bankard?
No.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So ordinance 23-09, first reading is approved. Vote was five to one.
Right now, we are on to item number 14, consideration of ordinance 23-10. This is the first reading. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance 23-10, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, amending section 38-87 of the city's code of ordinances governing the permitting process for special events, associated costs and fees, and potential entities for unpermitted or noncompliant special events, providing for the implementation of administrative actions, providing for provocation, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. It's been a reading of ordinance 23-10 by title only on the first reading, Mr. Mayor. We worked up this about two weeks ago. This is the ordinance that was in part the product of some concerns raised by activist organizations and members of the community concerning special event permitting. And this is the ordinance done in collaboration with that organization to reach a better product for the community and its government.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Crickets. All right, citizen comments are now closed. Before we continue, we're going to need a motion to adopt ordinance 23-10. So would like to make a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Shirley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. Vice Mayor Shirley, you have the floor.
I think we worked up this pretty well, and it's been an ongoing work in progress trying to fix an ordinance that was loosely assembled years ago. Mr. Moore did a great job pulling it together and working with the outside agency that was, that brought it to our attention, and maybe something that you would want.
I agree. It was a great collaborative, I guess, offering of this ordinance. It was something we had to do. Otherwise, it could very well be challenged, and the last thing we want to do is want it in court. So because of this entire process, we now have, as Mr. Moore says, a better product in our code of ordinances when dealing with events. Any other comments? No? All right, Patty, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. And so ordinance 23-10, first reading is approved.
Now let's go to item number 15, which is consideration of ordinance 23-05, which will be the second and final reading. Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance 23-05, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bella Beach, amending chapter 18, section 18-5, with the city's code of ordinances entitled Time for Qualifying, removing the specified qualifying period, providing for the establishment of the qualifying period by resolution of the city council, providing for the incorporation of recitals, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. This has been the second and final reading of ordinance 23-05 by title only.
Mr. Moore, before we get to citizen comments, would you please give a summary as to why this ordinance was created?
Yes, happily, Mr. Mayor. So the, your code presently provides that the no person shall qualify as a candidate in any regular city election prior to 8:00 a.m. on the 88th day preceding the next regular election, or later than 12:00 noon on the 81st day. It's a very fixed, set period. It is inflexible. There's not really a lot of leeway to change that as it's written. And so the, as if you apply that to the March 2024 election, for example, it would fall past the deadline that the city needs to notify the supervisor of elections of the ballot language and qualified candidates, and it would also span the Christmas holiday such that, and the weekend, such that there would really be two or three old business days during which somebody could qualify, which would present challenges to candidates interested in the position. And so in order to rectify that, what we've done is changed that language to just say, we'll do a resolution. This is very common in other communities to set the qualifying period by resolution, which you only do in one reading. That resolution is in our materials tonight, and we'll be reading and addressing that in a moment. But that's why this was written, adjusting your election.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Anyone like to comment on ordinance 23-05? All right, citizen comments are now closed. I'm going to need a motion to adopt ordinance 23-05. Again, this is the second and final reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Shirley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Roberts. All right, Vice Mayor Shirley, you have the floor.
I have nothing more to add. I have pretty good explanation of what we're voting on here.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this ordinance? No? All right, Patty, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. And so ordinance 23-05 is approved. Thank you, everyone, for getting that one down.
All right, Patty, we've made it to the regular agenda. Item number 16, consideration of applicants to fill vacant city council seats. Tonight, we have two candidates. The first is Mark Chester, and the second is Michael Hayward. See what, let's do it this way. Before we go to citizen comments or anything like that, is Mr. Chester here? And would you like to introduce yourself to the council?
Sure. I am here.
Please come up to the podium. Give us your full name and address.
Hi, Mayor and councilmembers. I am Mark Chester, and I am a resident here in Bella Beach. My address is 429 22nd Street. And I've been living here for four years, or so my wife tells me.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Oh, yeah. I put myself out here once before, and I never really thought of doing something like this three or four years ago. But I really love But I really love our community, and I am willing to do whatever I can to help our little community stay like it is, and run smoothly, efficiently, and I'm willing to do that. I, I enjoy being retired and being critical of how football games go, the way I would do it if I was coaching. But if I do something, I, I really put myself into it, and I'm willing to put in the time and effort that is necessary to do the very best that I possibly can.
Thank you, Mr. Chester. Don't sit down just yet. Would any councilmembers like to ask for a question? Mr. Chester? Nope? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Mr. Hayward. Would you like to introduce yourself to the council?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, City officials. My name is Michael Hayward. I'm a resident, I live on Biscuit Drive East. I've been a resident here for 31 years, so I grew up with the city very much. That's all I have to know. I moved away for college and grad school. I lived a couple of years in Japan teaching English, but that was it. Been back here ever since. In college, I studied political science, so I know how local government works. I took a course working in local government. In high school, I was part of Boy's State, so I was chosen to go to Tallahassee to work on local government issues as well. And for grad school, I studied international relations in DC, and I worked for the State Department. So I know how even federal government works. And I've been in multiple high-level meetings throughout the government. And I came home because my mother got sick, and I stayed with her and loved her out. And after she passed, I just got comfortable here again because it's home. And I've been home ever since that, and I think the opportunity presented itself, and I want to take part in getting back to my community.
Thank you, Mr. Hayward. Do we have any questions from the council, from Mr. Hayward? All right, thank you so much.
Wait, I do have a question. Are you working now? Because I'm trying to, I'm looking at your resume and I'm not seeing that.
I work for a movie production company right now. I run movie productions, but it's not set, so it's whenever the opportunity arises.
Does that some flexibility?
Thank you, Mr. Hayward. All right, let's go to the citizens for public comments. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of either of these candidates? All right, citizen comments are closed. All right, before we can move forward with voting, I'm going to need a motion to fill our currently vacant council seat. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. Mr. Banker, you have the floor.
I think you've got two good candidates here. What's about?
Everybody good with that? All right, let's move forward. Patty? Let's see, we all have our ballots now, right?
Yes.
All right, so you can only select one candidate?
While she's collecting those, I would like to make a comment. Frank already said it. I think we have two very qualified candidates. It's always nice when we, we are in that situation, so I think we're, we're in good shape here with regardless of which candidate is selected. And I appreciate voting, you guys, for signing up for this.
I am ready.
Councilmember Banker voted for Michael Hayward. Councilmember Livingstone voted for Mark Chester. Councilmember Notaro voted for Mark Chester. Councilmember Roberts voted for Mark Chester. Vice Mayor Shirley voted for Mark Chester. Mayor Gaddis voted for Mark Chester.
Thank you, Patty. And I'd like to thank both candidates for volunteering to serve our city. The winner is Mark Chester with five votes. Again, Mr. Hayward, I appreciate you stepping up, and please consider applying for any of our boards of committee as they come available. Now, welcome to our council, Mr. Chester. Patty, would you like to swear, Mr. Chester?
Will you swear, Patty?
Sure.
Kyle, take your picture. And just raise your hand. And repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, honor, protect, and defend.
It's a law. That I will support, honor, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
And I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And under the charter of the City of Bel Air Beach.
And under the charter of the City of Bel Air Beach.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of councilmember.
The duties of councilmember.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God. Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Just take the seat next to Councilmember Notaro.
Okay, she's the Sparty, right?
Thank you, Patty.
And for, Mr. Mayor, just for clarity and the record going forward, congratulations, Mr. Chester, on the vacant appointment. Your term will run through the March 2024 election, at which point the seat will be up for regular election. And we'll address that in the resolutions.
That's next.
Yes.
All right, well, let's get to the first official orders of case motion, Mr. Chester. This is item number 17. It's consideration of resolution 2023-10. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2023-10, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, calling for a general election to be held on March 19th, 2024, for the purpose of electing three city council members for a full-term office, and a fourth seat for the remaining tenure of a recently vacated council acquisition, to establish the qualifying data process for persons seeking elective office for the 2024 municipal election, authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement with supervisor of elections, establishing a polling place for March election, authorizing NLS County supervisor of elections to verify candidate petition cards and facilitate the election process, and establishing an effective date. This has been a reading of resolution 2023-10 by title only. This is a single reading as it is a resolution. The resolution in large part is administrative, it is to document for our purposes and with the supervisor of elections what we are calling for. You have three seats whose regular cycle is scheduled to be on the March 2024 ballot. I don't think there's any real, any real controversy or question there. There was some discussion about what happens with members able seat. And the language in your charter, as it reads, contemplates that the person appointed by the council upon a vacancy shall serve until the next regular election. Our next regular election is scheduled to be held in March 2024. What will happen is that election for that seat will do nothing to change the cycle that that seat is on. What it will do is whoever is elected in March 2024 to the seat vacated by members able will serve for the remainder of that term. Ordinarily, I would tell you, they will serve until March 2025. When they will serve until is in part a function of how all these charter amendments function. Because if those terms are extended through November 2026, then that may change that calculus. However, they will serve for the remainder of the natural term of councilmember Zabel's office upon the March election. How are we going to do that was a question we had at the last work session, and that's provided for in the resolution in section 4 sub-A and sub-B. And the way that it reads basically is, the three, assuming you get four people who run, the three people, you know, and as, and as I view this, we may have to address this. Assuming you get five people to run, the three people who get the most votes will get the regular seats. The fourth person will get, fourth place will get that shorter term. And that's how that's designed to function. As I review the resolution, I'm realizing that it doesn't address what would happen if in the event you don't have a full, if only four people run, how will that be decided? That could be construed as a tie that would be resolved by your, your charter's language on drawing lots and straws and the like. And we may, I may, in speaking with the clerk and manager, wish to do another resolution in November to clarify that. But assuming you have five people, such that you're having an election, and a contested election, the top four vote-getters would fill those seats. First place, second place, third place, if you will, would take the ordinary seats. Fourth place would fill Councilmember Chester's seat. And Councilmember Chester, you are fully eligible, provided you remain a qualified elector of the city. You are fully eligible to run, again, in earnest, to run for the position in March.
Thank you for, for clearing that up. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Nope? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Before we continue, we're going to need a motion to approve resolution 2023-10.
Motion.
Yeah, can we? For after the motion, discussion.
The discussion always happens after the motion. You, you did the first one?
I'm, I'm, so I'll leave it.
Okay, so Leslie, Notaro, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Frank Banker. Mr. Notaro, you have the floor.
I think this resolution is very clear. Section three, where he talks about the three vacancies, and then the other one gets the rest of Mr. Zabel's term. I think it's, it's clear. Thanks.
And as I was talking about, talking about it as an aside at the city manager a moment ago, one of the suggestions we had, he had was, if we have four people qualified, we can still just run the election just to see functionally who's getting that fourth seat. That's one approach we could do. Or to save on the election, we would have to address how that would be resolved without the need for one. Made cool, but then I didn't address that here in the, in the various ordinances on election. That was an oversight that we can still address. I would appreciate your insights on that, if you would prefer that you run the election if there are only four people. Of course, if you have less than four people run, then those two or three would get the terms. But at four, do you want to run an election, or would you have that rather resolved by lots on who gets the short straw and who gets the short term?
I would, I would say that if we only had four candidates, the first question would be to go to each candidate and see if anyone would consider doing the short term, and then that would save, would save us from having to at least have that ballot language. We have other ballot language anyway, so I don't know whether, if there would be any such.
You're, you're running an election regardless, for sure.
Have we always treated the replacement? I don't, I don't recall. They always in the past, and maybe it's just a panel flaw, but when we had to replace someone on council, they stayed on through that term, through that person's term.
That may be the case. Candidly, I didn't go through the entire history of it, in part because all of that is fact-intensive. For example, Member Livingstone was appointed in June of last year. It feels like she's just served a longer time than Member Chester might get to, but it's really just a function of when Member Gun's seat is up in March. Whether or not it was done in the past, to me, doesn't militate the, doesn't command the result. To me, I looked to the plain language of your charter. I reviewed that with your fellow, with my fellow charter officials. Candidly, I reviewed it with my colleagues as well, saying, am I, am I missing something here? And the unanimous consensus of reviewing the language of your charter as it reads is that they are appointed and served until the next regular election. And nothing, and the rest of the charter specifically dictates the cycles that seats are up for election, so that would run counter to other language, and you have to read a document like that in harmony with all its terms. So that's how I got to that result. It may, I can't tell you that it was never done the other way. Had I been your city attorney at the time, I don't think I would have interpreted it.
And the way that I see this, at first, I didn't agree with you at all, and then I realized that really we're not flipping the cycle. What we're doing is if you have an elected official who resigns early in his term, you're not actually, you're giving the council a speak on behalf of the citizens. There's still a whole, more, greater than 50% of the term that we should take it to the citizens to allow to vote for. But less than, if it were less than half the term, then I would, then, then, then this is the case of like Mark Chester.
I don't know that it's really about how much is left in the term as much as it is, are you having another election on a regular cycle, not a special election? Are you having another regular election? If so, the documents of your charter, in the spirit of the representative democracy that we have, say, well, then let the voters weigh in. You're having an election anyways. You guys filled the seat as a stopgap measure so that we can continue to do business with the full complement of seven members and avoid three-three ties and the like, where we didn't need them. But now the voters are going to be weighing in on three other seats. Why not just have them place everybody? I think is really more the thrust of it. It's not, if he had been in his last year, but we're having a regular election, same result, and that is what's happening. Members able seat would have been, forgetting all the charter amendments, would have been up in March 2025. It's one year left in the term on its ordinary cycle. So it's not really about how much is left in the term as much as the seat was vacated before a next regular election. Had Members able resigned in April 2025, whoever filled that seat, whether it was Member Chester, I mean, in April of 2024, that person would serve 11 months. I mean, they would never come up for election because there's no regular election between that and the end of term. So that's the only reason where time comes in if you're less than a year left, because you don't have regular elections.
Or exactly, qualifying.
Yeah. Yes, that would be, that would be an iteration. Yeah. So if you can't qualify in time. So that's, that's why this is working this way. And, you know, my, my one request of you, as we look at this resolution, would be, I appreciate consensus on how you want to handle, if you have exactly four members qualified, how would you like that handled? That's, again, my shortcoming in drafting this, that it's not drafted, but it's not in there, but I would appreciate council insight on what you'd like to see in that instance. I've heard Member Gaddis, or Mayor Gaddis's recommendation that you see if we can't get somebody to volunteer for the short term. But is that, is that the will of the board, or at least the consensus?
Comment?
Yes.
So I think it's clear that if we have five or more candidates for the March election, then we definitely will have an election.
Yes, sir.
That's clear. If we have four, or less, we have four exactly, even though it may cost, not may, it will cost money to have a. cost money to have an election, I guess my gut feel is it makes sense to go ahead and do that for the sole purpose of knowing what, what our citizens highly voted. So who was one, two, three, and four? And as you stated earlier, whoever comes out to be fourth out of the four would take Mr. Zabel's seat.
And I understand you are having an election for that. Based on these, at this point, your first reading, I won't presume a second reading passed. Should have passed in the same manner, then you will have issue elections on the ballot anyways.
Any other comments? No? All right.
I'm sorry, mayor, I didn't mean to interrupt your presiding officer. I'm looking for consensus direction. One of the challenges I had in drafting the charter amendments was I wanted consensus direction, and I have one or two of those people. It'd be really helpful to get the views of those memberships.
You'd like this, this answer, ma'am?
It would be most helpful, yes, I would.
We can do that. Okay, well, let's just, let's start with Mark Chester.
Well, I will tell you this, it, there's a big difference between serving a year and a half as opposed to five months.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not sure I agree with you on the filling, we've had this happen before in our country where we had to, they appointed somebody president after they resigned and they didn't have an earlier election, they filled out the term. So...
Yes, and I would say those were down by difficulty.
No, I, I, yeah, well, so just, I, you might have had more people participate in this if it wasn't for only five months as opposed to fill the entire term. That's my two cents.
I hear that, understanding that we're here now, if four people qualify, how would you like that resolved in terms of, would you, would you prefer to be resolved that internally, meaning draw lots or straws or something to see who's in place? Or do you think in the instance where there are four qualified candidates that, that that should be submitted and the like?
I, I always like for the, the people to be able to vote on things. I am also in favor of saving money and not wasting money whenever that's possible. So.
Okay.
Putting a lot of pressure on somebody that just got up here.
I, I, I'm sorry, how you calling? Well, normally I go left to right or right to left, and I just had to do, I rolled the dice. Leslie, would you like to weigh in on this?
Yeah, you know, it's part of saving money by not having, we only have four people qualified. We're gonna have to have the election anyway because of the amendments to the charter. So the, you know, having another question on there is not gonna be that significant to having the council member election.
So is that, you prefer the vote in that instance?
Pardon?
So is that you saying you, in an instance where four people qualify, you think a vote would be more appropriate?
Yeah, we have a little election.
Thank you.
I would say, yes, put them on the ballot, but it still shakes out to how will be determined who gets what's ranked.
It's whoever gets the least, out of those four, whoever gets the lowest number gets the one-year term, or the, what would ordinarily be the one-year term, the shortest term?
We don't have the other option, right? What else, what else are you gonna do?
The, the other option is to treat it as a four-way tie. And in your code, a tie is resolved, as evidenced here, by drawing lots or something else. So if you treat it as, you can treat it as a tie or you can submit it to the voters. If you treat it as a tie, we would draw lots or straws or something.
And that's assuming we don't end up reducing the council, that vote passes in March two to reduce the council to five, then, then you're...
That doesn't, that doesn't impact this cycle.
Okay, okay. So that, it's not retroactive, I mean, it doesn't happen at the same vote?
No, the, the cycle down to five happens at the conclusion of that seat's term, that fourth seat's term. So maybe sort of that remaining period, and then at the end of that, there's, there's two less council positions, yeah.
That makes sense. Yes.
Mr. Baker?
I think the charter's pretty clear on how to do this, and I'll stick with it.
Well, stick with it, treat it as a tie, and yeah, understood.
Mr. Livingstone?
I think council member Notaro summarized it pretty well, and I'm in agreement with having an election, it makes sense.
Mr. Roberts?
So one scenario that we didn't even talk about yet, so let's say, for example, we have four spots and we only have three people that actually register. So then all three of them, when, what do we, what do we, I'm just curious...
Then we were to appoint the vacancy thereafter.
We would appoint vacancies.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, so I, I'm in favor of other votes. People, people would be voting on the charter items anyway, so that makes sense.
I'm still, I'm in the mindset that if we have four candidates, that anyone who is interested in a short term, sort of as a trial size, they should be given that opportunity. And then the other three would do a full term, and then you don't even have to have the names on the ballot. It would cure itself.
Understood. I think I have my consensus direction. I will, of course, look at this particular aspect of this. Mr. Baker, your point on the charter is well taken, it could be treated as a tie, much as you would, you know, you would treat it as they have all voted for themselves, and it's a four-way tie. That would be the result, that's in some direction. If for some reason, in reviewing that, my analysis changes because this was on the fly issue I spotted, I will let you know.
Okay.
We still need to vote on the resolution.
All right. So we are voting on Resolution 2023-10.
As it, as written. Do you have your motion, yourself?
Patty, would you please tell the rules?
Council member Baker?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Thank you. Council member Chester?
Yes.
Council member Livingstone?
Yes.
Council member Notaro?
Yes.
Council member Roberts?
Aye.
Vice mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So Resolution 2023-10 passing unanimously. A little bit forward with that, with rhythm. All right, we are on to item number 19, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Do we have any?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Authorize the city manager to grant easements to Duke Energy Florida LLC. Before we go to the council for comments and vote on this, would citizens like to speak? No citizen comments? There's some comments, we're closed. All right, this is placed on the agenda by city manager Reifer. You have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. So this is an item we discussed in the last work session. This is an easement at Crossman Park that Duke is requesting to place switchgear equipments that have to do with the underlining of the belt boulevard on the eastern side. Like I mentioned before, the idea of designing this project was to try to keep all the equipment as much as possible off private property in some instances. It was unavoidable, and residents have cooperated and given easements to Duke Energy to make this project go. This is an opportunity for the switchgear to be placed on public land at Crossman Park, and this, it's a city's decision to allow that easement for the purpose of the underground project. I've included the easement itself, the map of where the two switchgear will be placed in Crossman Park, which is going to be the north and west part of the parcel. And also, he was sort of rendering what, what the equipment would look like at the park.
Okay, Mr. Reifer, before we go forward on this, I'm gonna give a motion to offer us, city manager, to grant easements to Duke Energy Florida LLC. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Baker. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by vice mayor Shirley. Mr. Baker, do you have the floor?
There's two boxes, junction boxes to the left, or they gotta be removed. Now, those need...
That's communication.
All communication? Both of them?
Uh, the one looks like it has power.
The little one should be communication.
And then the big brown one is communication as well. Pretty good clarification with the little, small electrical box.
Here...
I have a question. It looks like the house on the corner, on the opposite corner, has a box or something going in there. I assume that easements are already being granted, but I realized today that they need quarters for a wall there. Is that, has that been taken into consideration?
Yes, that, that wall has been taken into consideration, the entire project. It was actually, as you know, it was trenched and filtered for quite some time because it's a unique piece of property where our usual rules in our ordinances for walls don't apply because it's completely, the county's right away with, with their line of sight for their intersection. So they did get involved after we approved it per our law code, and then they had the, they actually had to back the wall off the property line closer to the, to the house itself and reduce the height of the wall because of the intersection.
But Duke's been part of this process, my question, because the quarters are huge. I mean, you know, as they should be for block wall. And I just noticed that, I'm thinking of this morning, so...
No, they follow the order.
Okay.
I, I was shocked that a single person was out there dating actually.
I did.
Female.
Really?
It was a female.
Wow. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this topic? No? All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you are all for this.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, now let's move to item 19, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? No? I, I think everyone's probably getting ready.
Mayor, mayor, I didn't get this in the city manager board, I just want to mention that officer caught up, didn't point out that the sergeant was called into an emergency that was supposed to be here to report her. So it was actually a situation where a lot of officers were needed.
Good. I mean, not good, but you know, at least we have an excuse. All right, well, in that case, let's just move on to item 20, council comments. You know what, Mark, I'm gonna skip you this time, I'll come back to you next later. All right, so up next is council member Roberts.
Thank you, mayor. Again, I want to, I came in, I think, a week ago, and was talking to Patty about some other issue, and that's when she told me about her, her news. And it sort of just took a breath for a moment, that she's gonna be retiring. So I wish her nothing but the best. I know she's gonna spend a lot of time with her grandchildren, she informed me, so I know you'll enjoy that, so have, have fun with it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. One quick question to the city manager, which is, do we have, have we had any candidates express interest in the maintenance worker position?
Yes, community services administrator, Eric Lanz, has been interviewing, and I think he's done four up to this point.
Awesome.
So, I guess we've had interest, and I know he's really looking at them all, he's trying to find the perfect fit.
Great, thank you. That's all.
Hey, Mr. Roberts, up next is council member Notaro.
Your comments?
Mr. Baker?
Just a couple. About two weeks ago, I've, I've gotten knocked on their door by FEMA on a Sunday. Asked if there was any flood damage, my first question to the federal official was, what's the NFIP insurance lawsuit going on? Huh? Typical government response. Didn't know anything I was talking about. Tried to talk to the attorney general, she's part of this, still in limbo. So I don't know, most people's flood insurances are probably paid this year going forward, I don't know where this is gonna go. Senator Scott's office is still working on it. Patty, you have a jewel to this city.
Thank you.
I am going to miss you, I think this whole city ojai, salute.
Thank you, Frank.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Up next is council member Livingstone.
Well, I was very surprised as well to hear about the candidate's retirement. Patty, I appreciate her best, and I know we have a month left together, so we're going to hopefully spoil her rotten, and she well deserves. So we are gonna miss you tremendously, but glad that you guys are here. Mr. Baker, appreciate you applying. Please consider, like mayor Gaddis said, consider some of the other appointments within the city. I think that you'll find that you get to know the council more, and there'll be lots of opportunities, so please consider that. You're an excellent candidate, so thank you for applying.
Thank you, Ms. Livingstone. All right, up next is council member Chester.
Just briefly, Patty, I'm not big on coincidences, but I hope I joining the team as the committee bearing on why you're failing out. I do hope you enjoy your time with your grandchildren, just you may find that you have a little less and less with them as you spend more time with them, because kids, kids are a joy, and it's fun to stir it up and then leave it to the parents.
Thank you.
It's, I'm sorry I won't get a chance to work with you for very long, but you've been really wonderful anytime. I had to come in and ask any questions about anything.
Oh, thank you.
I appreciate your years of service. Enjoy your time, it's wonderful.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chester. Up next is vice mayor Shirley.
I just want to thank both Mr. Chester and Mr. Baker for stepping up. We rarely have people step forward, so we really appreciate your, your consideration, considering taking the position, and there are always positions available. We might get with Patty, because she may have some openings right now, but that, in council, changes often, so certainly stay in the loop. Thank you very much, and I, I appreciate both of our candidates. And, you know, as I said, when Patty called me with her phone call, the first thing I said was, well, I'm not happy about you retiring. And then I had to rethink that, I said, well, I'm glad you're retiring, but you will definitely be missed, and you know?
Thank you.
I know we have another month of time with you, and, you know, look forward to spending some more time with you, but enjoy it, and thanks for everything you've done. I know you've been here almost as long as I have, so it's really nice to have that longevity in a city position. We've had a lot of turnover over the years, so it's just nice to see the same face every day. So hopefully we can find another person that will stay as long as you did.
Yes.
Do we have anyone in the office that might have an interest in a foot position, or?
I'm not aware of any at this point, but we do have some prospects that we're looking to come up with.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, vice mayor Shirley. All right, this is normally the time whenever I get on my stump about beach nourishment. I think while things are going all right, I'm just gonna keep my mouth shut on that. Also, Patty, I echo all the citizens' hopes for her tonight. It's been an absolute joy and pleasure to work with you, and I really do, I hope you are able to enjoy your, your retirement and spend time with those grandkids. That's all I have for tonight. If anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn, I would entertain that. Mr. Baker, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, good night, everyone.